With roll call.
Charles Blacklands.
Here.
Reed Campbell.
Here.
Tom Haglund.
Here.
Sue Kern.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
He said he's getting on right now, so he should be here soon.
I think I saw the mic just.
Bob Nystrom, roll call.
Here. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay.
Okay, all present again.
All present.
Thank you. Just in this area, we can get back to the main thing. All right, can everyone still hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. In a very unopposite way, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and try and do this together. I pledge allegiance to the republic. And I state to the republic, the wishes stand as one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. That's some of the best irony I've ever heard. All right, so we have some very unique circumstances going on, obviously, and this is our first attempt to have more of a virtual school board meeting. I think it's probably the first time in the history of our school board having such a meeting. So bear with us to those that have joined online and are watching, I think by YouTube, as we attempt to get through our first school board meeting of this nature. I would like to read somewhat of an announcement, and so I will do that first. On March 13th, 2020, Governor Walz declared Minnesota at a peacetime state of emergency. Since the time of this original announcement, several executive orders have been issued requiring the transition to distance learning for all students. In light of these executive orders, MSBA has strongly encouraged school boards to read by telephone, conference call, or other electronic means. Minnesota Statute 13D021 permits school boards to open meetings by conference call or other electronic means. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota directive to residents to stay at home and guidance about limiting personal-to-person contact due to COVID-19 endemic, this meeting of the Brainerd School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is feasible for at least one board member, the superintendent, or the school district's legal council to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location by watching YouTube live. School board members are reminded to mute your microphones when they are not speaking. Those wishing to speak should go to Google, to via Google Meet, then wait to be recognized by myself as board chair. I will determine the order in which the board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone, telephone, speak, and then mute your device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. School board members should wait until the name is called before voting. Persons, community members monitoring this meeting from a remote location may submit a comment through email into communications at ISD181.org. This meeting is being recorded. Access to recording will be made available on the school district website as soon as is reasonable possible. I'm hoping that everyone heard me just fine and that I did have my mic on mute. Did I get a thumbs up that you heard just fine? Okay, good, thanks. All right, so we're going to move into our first action, which is to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
Second. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Blacklands for approval of the agenda. Any questions, discussion?
I would like to make sure that everyone knows it's as amended, because I think we said as presented. Okay? Is that okay?
I'm sorry, what was that, Lane?
That it's as amended, and I believe we said presented, so as amended.
I'm sorry, as amended, you're correct. Yeah. Okay, roll call, please.
Reed Campbell.
Yes.
Tom Haglund.
Yes.
Sue Kern.
Yes.
Ruth Nelson.
Yes.
Bob Nystrom.
Yes.
Charles Blacklands.
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Next, we'll move into our district recognition. Superintendent Mike Black.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's really a strange time right now.
Because you're being heard through.
Okay, so I can be heard there, yes, okay. That's all right, that'll be great. I'd like to recognize many of our students for recognitions that appeared following the Winter Brainerd Warrior Wrestlers. Kate Barrett was honored as Most Valuable Wrestler. Adley Danielson was given the Corey Borg Award. Cole Larkin was named Most Improved Varsity Wrestler, and Gabe Wagner was named the Hardest Worker. Congratulations to Maya Nelson for being named the Brainerd Warrior Basketball Offensive Player of the Year, as well as the Most Valuable Player for the season. Alie Prusinski was named the Defensive Player of the Year. Kate Statham was named Most Improved, and Erica Lane and Grace Zimmerman both were named Hardest Working Players. Congratulations also to our adapted four hockey team members. Blaze Enter, Trevon Hatt, Matt Allard, Kayden Robinson, for being named All-Conference, and Karla Schuler and Tate Bolter for being named All-Conference. Gaines Atwater was named Most Improved Offensive Player. Alex Gedker was named Most Improved Defensive Player, and MVP was Matt Allen. Congratulations to the Boys Warrior Hockey Team Award winners. Jacob Dries was selected Most Improved. Kaden Cruz was the Best Offensive Player. Ian Adlin was selected as the Best Defensive Player, and the Warrior Award went to Christian Cappadell. Congratulations to the Warrior Boys Basketball Team players Owen Davis and Connor Powers being selected All-Conference. Griffin Russian and Ben Staling were selected to the All-Conference Honorable Mention Team. Owen Davis and Jonah Masakovic were named Scholars for All-Conference. Connor Powers was Offensive Player of the Year. Ben Staling was Defensive Player of the Year, and the Warrior Award winner was Jonah Masakovic, and Team MVP was Connor Powers. Congratulations also to the Warrior Girls Hockey Team players Sophie Robinson and Gabby Smith, who are selected to as All-State Players. Georgie Oz and Sophie Robinson were named Academic Allstate. All Section 8 AA players were Sophie Robinson, Gabby Smith, Taylor Larson, Lindsay Booth, and All Section 8 AA Honorable Mention was Josie Kramer. Congratulations to our kids. It's fun to be seeing their names again and recognizing them for a job well done. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we will have our public input. So the process for a little bit, and Cory, if you have any public input questions or comments, if you could share those at this time.
There is no public input on the communications at ISD181.org.
Okay, we will proceed into approval of our regular school board meeting that was held on March 23rd, to approve the minutes.
So.
So. Is there a second?
Second.
Ruth, was that you?
I seconded and made a few motions, but nobody heard me because I keep forgetting to take off my mute.
All right, we'll get you in on the next round, Charles. All right, so we've got, I believe, a motion from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Nelson for approval of the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Tom Haglund.
Yes.
Sue Kern.
Yes.
Ruth Nelson.
Yes.
Bob Nystrom.
Yes.
Charles Blacklands.
Yes.
Reed Campbell.
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Next up will be approval of our consent agenda. I just want to move to approval of the consent agenda presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Director Campbell, second by Director Kern for approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Sue Kern.
Yes.
Ruth Nelson.
Yes.
Nystrom.
Yes.
Charles Blacklands.
Yes.
Reed Campbell.
Yes.
Tom Haglund.
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right into new business. First up will be a presentation of our building project updates. Damian, are you on live?
I'm there, can you see me? Can you hear me?
I can see you, I can hear you.
Perfect.
I pretty much just see Charles online from there, Damian, okay? All right, so you can just send update on all three wave problems.
Yep. So, get our update here for our bonus update, Wednesday, April 15, 2020. We're going to cover, we'll do a quick update on the COVID-19, how to pack in construction, project updates, high school music story equipment, review of a changeover that we're going to be doing, then also the FFME update with Lindsay Krantz. So, COVID-19 update, right now, construction is going really well, considering we've had good counts on site far as manpower, we're making good progress, so things have been going well, and it's nice to walk the sites. I was on three of the four projects this morning, and it's nice to see how much work is getting put in place and that the world is still clicking along. We have put processes procedures in place, we're social distancing, we are trying to limit exposure by not having people eat lunches and taking their breaks together, we have hand washing stations, you know, we're doing everything that we can with CDC regulations, so, and we're, you know, trying to protect the workers, trying to, you know, stop the spread of the virus. So, you know, we do expect that we're going to get effective, construction will be effective. There are things that are happening that we're seeing, we are seeing material plant shutdowns in other states that we're getting materials from, fin two, you know, technology, lighting, lots of different things, door hardware, doors. We are paying attention to it, and, you know, so far, we're in a good spot for all the projects, but we are going to keep monitoring it as it progresses. You know, we anticipate there could be some manpower issues, if people maybe get sick and whatnot, but, you know, we're just going to take it day at a time and try to be optimistic as we can be and keep getting work done, so. Any questions about that?
All right, Brainerd High School, actually, it was Scott right behind me, and I don't know if it's Scott, I'm going to give a quick update. All right, I'm trying to get up into a small space here, but, yeah, project update for Brainerd High School, so area is one, two, and three with new construction. If you're on by soon, you can see that envelope is getting closed. Area three and one with the new construction on second floor, we got paint, we've got grid going in, we've got MEP finishes going, so we're going to be looking to get our carpet in in early May, and those rooms should be primarily complete year before the end of May. The lower level, first floor, every month, so south of gridline CC, as we call it, that's where everything turns to ours, so the main math classroom suite, that is not too far behind the upper level. We have door frames are in, rooms are painted, MEP rough ends are 95% complete, so everything's looking really good. Oh, excuse me. Oh, that's on there, so, so you see the top right picture, we got curtain wall going in, that's the area three, our courtyard, so that exterior building envelope is getting closed, we got brick going on, metal panel will follow. Top left picture is area six, twiddies foundations are going to be completed today, they're going to cover the last two columns, and structural steel will start going up and start getting that framed in as well. Area five, we started demolition on Little Theater, and the H-link is also, lock has been removed, ceiling's been removed, we're not framing anything up in there, and, yeah, that's kind of long shot of the building project update there. Any questions regarding that? Here we go, move on to music storage equipment, so, if you recall from oversight, there was a discussion to put that music storage equipment back into, I shouldn't say back into, but into the project. It was previously portionally got that need, but directive was to have that be part of the construction. We looked at a few different systems, one being a custom built-in system that was very, very high price, and through the users, what we finalized on is this Wanger storage system. So Wangers kind of the gold standard for music storage equipment, they're a local Minnesota company, all that equipment is manufactured in Opa- Tama, Minnesota, and they would be part of the Omni purchasing contract, which is similar to what we purchased the bleachers from, from, off of, I should say, with HGI, and you'll see in your board packet that Wanger quote and the layout, which is the larger picture there, for $112,581, which is about a third of the cost if we went with custom built-in option. Any questions?
I had a question. Was there a reason why we couldn't use any of the materials that we had for storage in the old music department?
We are utilizing quite a few pieces of storage equipment that's existing. One of the common themes around the school is that there's a lot of mismatched pieces of equipment, a lot of very old pieces of equipment that really don't fit the need anywhere. Additionally, if you notice on that diagram, a lot of this equipment is in that center courtyard, so, or I shouldn't say courtyard, the commons area, so you want it all to match, you want it all to be, you know, new, lockable, kind of jive with the aesthetics of that area as well.
Scott, you did say that quite a lot of the existing equipment is being used?
That's correct. We're going to utilize kind of the best and equipment that they have currently to fill in some of these storage locations, like you'll notice that, you know, the band choir and orchestra rooms all have a storage area, and only one of those areas is included in this quote, so that, those other areas are utilizing existing music storage equipment, shelving, things of that nature. And I'm recalling initially when we brought this board, it was about $189,000, so by identifying existing pieces of equipment that work and changing the layout, we were able to get that down to $112,581. Okay, Damian, Scott, are you planning to update on all three waves and then we'll come back to action, or?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's it for the high school, I'll step back and let Damian take that over.
All right, thanks, Scott. You. Next project, New Baxter Elementary, metal panels and masonry are continuing on the exterior. Curtain walls being installed, drywall finishes at the industrial wing continue, finishes at the kindergarten wing are taking place, working mechanical room, and then finish cafeteria wing. Did I say cafeteria before, and then say kindergarten before? And it was very short, a lot of good things are happening on site, it's great to see the finishes going in place, into wrapping up, it's looking great, so, lots of, lots of, we're running probably 45, 50 workers on site, and it changes quick when you have that kind of manpower, so it's nice to see. Any questions on the Baxter? This one, Elementary, miscellaneous finishes are being completed, classrooms for the majority, the majority of them are completed, the site looks really nice, the floor comes in. We're framing at the bill, building tie-ins, so we've taken some space inside the school and are getting our tie-ins put together so we can get life safety systems in place, you know, whether it's a fire alarm or the fire suppression system, doing some of those things. Drywall finishes and administration entrances is ongoing, we're taping that area, and then cafeteria, existing gymnasium windows, they have been installed, we removed the glass block, installed curtain wall windows, added a lot of natural light into the gymnasium, lot going on in the gymnasium between all the elements of moving storage and some of the worker storage, we have a lot of items in the gym, but out there last week, again, not quite as many workers out there, because there's not quite the need at the moment, but overall looking nice.
Damian, quick question back to the Baxter School, I wasn't able to trigger it quick enough on my mute. Is there any, and maybe you touched on this earlier, but any concerns about meeting the deadline for this fall for students walking into the building?
No. No, that job is tracking very, very well. So we are scheduled right now for, I believe, July 30th to finish, and I think we're going to be just fine.
Thank you. Damian, just a question, with Harrison, the contractor a month ago said that they were going to have problems finishing on time, but now you feel they can finish on time?
I was talking about Baxter Elementary.
Oh, okay. How about Harrison?
Yeah, or that's next.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem, mom. All right, Harrison Elementary, exterior metal panel install is wrapping up, exterior glazing has been installed. Rough ends at the lower level are on sheet rocking design on the lower level as well, and we're working on finishes, painting, hotel, kitchen, case work is in, a lot of the rooms already. Coral tile is ongoing, basically finishes are in high, in high, or in high battery. We are working in the lower level, starting to do some work in the inside in the existing school, trying to get a jump on things. As far as the new addition work, work is wrapping up fast, we're getting ready to do some flooring, I believe Collinex is going to have kitchen equipment on site next week, so things are going well at Harrison. You know, it's going to be one of our, it's going to be one of our harder summer slams. We're hoping that we're going to get in there a little earlier, we're doing some things to be proactive to get in early, you know, we're, our team are talking about, you know, how to approach that project, you know, having to be, you know, taking COVID into consideration, social distancing, you know, trying to control density levels, and, you know, we're going to take, you know, we're going to put the plans we can possibly have in place, I hope we get an early start, because I think they will help us out a lot there, so being what we need to do there to be ready for school, to be able to, so. Right now, I don't, you know, if it's on the gas pile, we're not slowing down, so we're hoping that we can keep everything, keep everything, keep the progress going and finish strong here, so.
Okay, questions on Harrison?
Okay, Garfield, contracts are awarded, some buildings are being reviewed, we're getting ready to begin construction, you know, we're hoping to get in there and do an early start, not nearly as stringent as Harrison. Pre-construction walkthroughs and build modifications are ongoing, plans are being reviewed by the state permitting, and I believe we have a construction coordination meeting this week to get that thing, kind of start getting these contractors together to get our schedule lined up. It's kind of tough, because, you know, you want to hurry up and kind of get things ready to go, and you think you might be able to start May fourth, we're not sure, and, you know, so there's a little bit of, a little bit of planning around trying to figure out where to get start, but everybody's inviting us to work, we're hopeful that we'll execute quickly once we go ahead. Lowell Riverside, do both these together in conjunction with one another, because we're basically in the same spot, very similar to Garfield, sure view, and we're hearing this underway, specifically reviewing long-dated items that may be sourced overseas, plan of being permitting, our progress, it's just been a mid to late May groundbreaking, and these projects here start with additions, and some interior work, but not very much, so these jobs are not going to be nearly, will be affected by the same as some of the other ones, as far as COVID goes, so we expect that this will, these products will start off well, and next summer, hopefully, we have, we don't have any COVID anymore in the summer. We play these jobs. Baxter Elementary Childhood, things are progressing nicely, getting ready for a fall start, so it's straight up slated for September 1st kickoff, with a January 1 completion, so everything is tracking well there. And then we have three schools, we're picking up resignments right now on the South Campus, and then also West B and Brainerd Learning Center, so we're working towards most commat design deadlines in June, and get things ready to go, and look for, you know, bids on time in December on those three projects, so. Any questions on wave three? Is Lindsay on line?
She is, I believe.
She is, I believe.
Tell them real quick and can I give a quick F P four review?
Absolutely. Thank you, Damian. Um thanks to see some familiar faces today during this time of social distancing. Uh I'm just gonna give you a quick little progress update on the furniture for Brainerd High School. We've been working hard um at focusing on the first uh order of furniture that will be ready for fall installation this fall twenty twenty. Um those two main areas that we first focused on is the commons area, including the food court and the cafeteria space. And then also the media center. So we, um after the furniture fair a few weeks ago, a few months ago now, um we solicited pricing from four different vendors for furniture for these spaces. Um we asked that each vendor provide pricing bulk on Sourcewell contract. And then the next most competitive contract. Um we did that, we've heard um a strong desire to work with Sourcewell, but we also wanted to make sure that we were still getting the best value, um the best pricing for the furniture that would be ordered. Um great news, all the pricing that came back through our vendors, um Sourcewell was the lowest competitive pricing per contract. So we're able to buy, to purchase those pieces of furniture right through Sourcewell, um which is a really great, um kind of added bonus of, of this process. Um Brainerd High School, the commons area, we originally had budgeted two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the seating for all of the commons, food court and cafeteria. It's a large number, but we had a very large amount of students to um to accommodate. Andrew wanted to raise the capacity of that area during any given lunch period to around nine hundred students. Um so working with um the school district, Reed and Jeff, um understanding the existing furniture that's in the district, utilizing as much as we possibly can that's in good condition. Um we were able to really narrow down the amount of furniture that was needed for these spaces. Um so overall, we had a sub total for that area in particular of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is about an eighty-eight thousand dollar savings from our original budget goal. That was great news. We were able to spread the furniture procurement around. Um so we have four different vendors that will be providing furniture for that area. And then also the media center. We had originally allocated sixty thousand dollars for the media center in each layer. Um understanding that this is a very different space than the library currently is. Um so some unique needs for this space. Um again, the, the bid came in great. The Sourcewell was the lowest price. Um and we had a sub total of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-four. So again, a savings just around thirty-seven thousand, no, I'm sorry, a savings of twelve thousand dollars for that area. So a total for the first kind of phase of furniture purchases, um we have a total of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um great news, everything is coming back really well under budget. Um and we're able to then roll that savings into elsewhere throughout the projects.
Hey, thank you, Lindsay. Do you have more that you're presenting for Damian?
That's it for me.
Hey, great. Thank you. Any question from the, from the board or for Damian or Lindsay before we move on? Okay. Alright, so uh we will move into item number two, which is approval of the uh winger music cabinets that was presented.
I'll send them over for a vote.
Second. Thank you. So we have a motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Neistrom for approval. Any further discussion? If not, roll call please.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Bob Neistrom?
Yes.
Charles Blacklands?
Yes.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Tom Hagland?
Yes.
Sue Curran?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Next, we'll move into item number three, which is approval of the furniture fixtures and equipment bins for VHS comments in the media center as presented.
I still move approval of the furniture fixtures and the housements in the media center?
Second.
I second. Thank you. We have a motion by Director Campbell, second by Director Blacklands for approval. Any further discussion? If not, roll call please.
Uh I.
Yes.
Charles Blacklands?
Yes.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Tom Hagland?
Yes.
Sue Curran?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Uh next up will be uh approval to cancel the summer session of Baxter Park Recreation in conjunction with the I D S, ISB one A one Community Education as per the Joint Powers Agreement as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Corey, I don't know if you're planning to present or share anything or wait for your questions?
I think I'll take it since um uh I'm in front of the mic right now. But yesterday, we had a joint powers board meeting yesterday afternoon to discuss uh what we should be doing as far as the of the summer programming that we're going to have uh in conjunction with the school and Baxter uh summer park and recreation. There were a number of us there and of, of course, the, the hardest part of the discussion we had yesterday is canceling more um issue, more opportunities for our kids to have fun and to enjoy. Exactly why we live here, all the fun activities that are, that are going on in the spring and summer when we live in Brainerd, Minnesota. Um but when everyone uh put the safety and security issue for our children and for our coaches and for our community um at the forefront of our decision making, um the, the team that was at the meeting, and it was done via uh internet as well yesterday. Um it was the recommendation of the team to cancel it just for this summer only, the summer of two thousand and twenty. Now I do want the board to know that there was not a quorum um at that meeting. However, there were, um let's see, I look at my list and there were nine or ten people there. And um everyone that was there felt that it was in the best interest to do that for this summer. We talked about other options even about how could we start it later, potentially maybe later in July. But again, how do we staff it and get everything organized and ready to go? And we just felt that uh weighing all the pros and the cons, that the best decision for the summer only would be to, to cancel it for this summer. So the recommendation coming from that team is to cancel it for this year. The other thing I should tell you is that um this needs board approval as well as Baxter City Council approval. And so we have agreed upon the language that's in the agenda today. If the board approves it or does not approve it, um it'll go back to the city council next Tuesday evening. So.
Lane, when does uh, when does that typically start? When does the, the summer session start?
It usually starts in May. All the planning would be starting right away. The, the program and such is ready to go to print um as of this Friday and would come out a couple of weeks from now. Um but it would officially start in May. It would go through, um through July.
So is the program not gonna be printed at all for this summer?
Yep, yes, it will be printed, but for now it's just, we want it to be as current and up to date as it possibly can be with, so that we aren't publishing something and then have to backtrack on it. So we decided that before it went to print, we wanted to make sure that we had taken action at least on the summer program for the park's recreation.
So that part of the program just won't be in there. Okay.
So it is the recommendation of the team that we cancel it for this summer only.
You mentioned that we didn't have a quorum. How many was a quorum that you had? Nine or ten people?
We needed four voting members uh for a quorum at the meeting and there were only three of us voting members that were there. Um but there were other people that were providing input into the discussion yesterday. So actually, if you talk to think I one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, there were ten people there. So but three were voting members.
I saw approval or cancel the coming summer season of Baxter Park and Rec.
Thank you. We have a motion by Director Campbell, second by Director Nelson for approval as presented. Any further discussion? Uh Lane, could you share a little bit on what kind of discussion took place and the challenges that if this were to be pushed back, let's say a month?
Um I think what we talked about there, first of all, there's real uncertainty as to the COVID nineteen pandemic, when the peak is going to occur. And you know, there's, there's discussion about the possibility that um it could be in June, it could be as, as late as July, some of that. But I think the thing that was um most, most highly discussed is somebody brought up, what if we had the program from July through August? Um but the conversation was that how do we pro, um implement all of the social distancing, the safety measures and such? How do we find, get the people together to do all of the planning that would have to be done to even make this happen come July? And then it could get canceled even after trying to do all that work. And so uh when we talked about it, um as much as nobody wanted to bring forth this recommendation, I think everybody felt that it was really the only option that we had for this, this summer. Corey, did you want to add anything else?
Uh another consideration is the commission of the fields. The city has let their maintenance staff.
Another large consideration with the decision was the city's ability to have the fields ready for play. At this point, they have not hired um their summer maintenance crews. They've done no work on their fields. And in fact, the emergency declaration of the city passed uh states that there is no person programming or field maintenance indefinitely. So that was another big consideration that we don't have the staff to plan things at this point. And we, we don't have fields.
Bob, did you, did you have a question?
No. Um I have a quick question. Corey, are, are the, the summer programs in, included in this? Are they like baseball, girls' fastball, softball, those type of activities? Is that what we're referencing, correct?
That is correct. The Baxter Parks and Rec program, which is primarily on baseball and fastball. I should note that the regular community and youth enrichment programs have all been pushed back into July and August. Where possible.
Thank you for that question, Charles. I, I've got another question. Does this impact the Brainerd? Uh is there been any dialogue with the city Brainerd and their, and the activities within Brainerd?
Their Parks and Rec director was on the call yesterday, just sort of as an observer. At one point, I, I asked for some information from him regarding what the statewide Parks and Rec organization, all discussions have been. Um he told us that their Parks and Rec Commission will meet later this month. And I assumed he was on call in part to hear what we were deciding. Um and I'm sure that will influence the decision making as well. I've also had an informal conversation with the Miss Waw Parks and Rec director. Um and I think at this point, they are moving ahead as scheduled, but that seems quite likely to change.
Thank you. So I do have some reservations and concerns about, about canceling uh the whole entire summer program at this stage. Uh I understand our, our stay-at-home order should make forth, but there's just so are rapidly changing and like we will continue to rapidly change. Um so I, I am a bit concerned about canceling something at this stage, in particular if we could potentially have the entire program and push it back a month or whatever that may be, just whatever it might be, not knowing what the outcomes uh are going to take place in the next several days and weeks. And so personally, I'm not, I'm not ready to make this, or to endorse this decision to cancel it at this stage. Uh any other discussion before we uh take roll call?
Tom, I, I, as, as a parent, um whose three kids are actively part of, of the summer recreation program, we value it. We, we lean on it. Um we, we count on it for socialization of our kids. Um boy, I'm one that would, that, I, I side with you on this, Tom. If there's any way we can even look at, at even being hopeful that, at a, an abbreviated summer rec program, if there's any possibilities there, I, I'd be more comfortable leaning on that or even hoping on that um other than just lopping it off uh at this stage.
Can I?
And then if, if I could add, um I certainly agree with both of you and your thoughts. Um I just want to remind the board that this is a fee-based uh program and run through community app. And quite frankly, we just can't deficit spend to support this program at this time. And maybe Corey could talk to that.
Wouldn't it be the case that if Baxter wanted to do a program here in the summer, they could do it without going through a community app? Possible?
I mean.
Uh that would, because this is just um eliminating our joint powers agreement.
Right. They don't have any, any infrastructure to run any program on. We, we could probably, we could stay open to the possibilities, I suppose. Um we would just have to know that there are several weeks of setup ahead, that have to happen ahead of any program's start. So the programs are scheduled to start in a few weeks here. So we should already be running actually. Um so we're already behind to run our regular programs, which I don't think is on the table at this point. Um so we would be, if we were to run something starting in, say, July, we would need to start working on that in May, potentially before this closure expires. So that would just, and you know, you, on your consent agenda, we're a lot of lands for community and staff. There aren't many of us left. Those that are, are running a childcare program that serves nearly a hundred kids a day and trying to keep up with the student department. So I, I, I don't know how it happens in power, from what I've heard from the state too, that they, they don't have the man, the person power to get the field to me.
That's the biggest thing is that they're not ready.
Yeah.
They gotta be mostly, they gotta be in danger.
Yeah. As a parent of a little baseball player, I'm sure the devastation of this action, it feels early, but I don't see how knowing what the backend prep work for these programs looks like.
I, I guess, Corey, uh another thought that I had, and, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna in any way play Monday morning quarterback on this. I appreciate the work that the joint powers team put into this. But a question that I have is, uh one, uh one thing that my, my two, my two oldest children, my daughters, ten and twelve years old, they took part in a, um I think it's the, the fastball, softball association. And I don't believe that's, that's part of the, the Brainerd Recs, uh Park and Rec. Um they do use the fields, I guess, but has there been discussion of, of partnering? And maybe for a summer handing off some of the, some of the, and I'm shooting from the hip on this, but, but some of the heavy lifting in terms of coordinating and that sort of. and I'm shooting from the hip on this, but, but some of the heavy lifting in terms of coordinating and that sort of thing to some of the associations? Like baseball or softball?
I think that's something that will happen naturally as a result of the action you take. We have no formal relationship, and in fact, I don't, I don't even really know who runs the travel program in Baxter, but certainly that's a possibility. I imagine that, like all of our excellent athletic associations, that they will stand in, in the gap of what we're able to do. And certainly, my office would work with them and would work with the city to make the facilities, the fields as available to them as we can, given our limitations.
I, I would think that in, in crisis situations like this, I, I've come to understand that creative leadership is king in terms of innovation and filling the gaps. And, and I like what your thought there, Cory, that maybe some of these associations will fill that gap just naturally. I just wonder if there's a way that the school district, without having to do all the, again, heavy lifting and planning, but could we play the role of, of facilitator in terms of trying to feather out some of these associations that are out there? I think the softball association that my girls are a part of are still fairly new, but we might need an entity to try to quarterback or facilitate on the front end here in the absence of the Park and Rec, some of these conversations. And maybe that's a joint powers team that does that.
I think I could find time to be able to reach out to the travel associations and discuss with them what we could potentially, how we could partner with them. What comes to mind first is with facilities, of course, maybe the fields available to them as much as we could, given the limitations of staffing. And then also, I think we could probably commit to facilitating some communication with people who have traditionally come to us for Parks and Rec program. So if, if they were able to develop some programming, we could perhaps communicate that out. That seems like a fair and appropriate role that community can play.
I feel comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
So if we don't cancel this, can we still work on possibly making something together from what Cory was just talking about? Or if we say, cancel this now, then that is over? Because I feel like it's premature to cancel the program for the summer.
No, I think that if you cancel this, it's saying the summer rec program as we know it will be canceled for the summer, but if she's given the directive to look for some other ideas that might work for the summer, that certainly can still happen. What I'm unsure about is if, if this board votes no, it still will go to the city council. And again, we need both parties involved to make the program as it's been run in the past function because it's their space and a lot of the work is gone through our program. So. But I think that that sounds like a really great solution if there's some additional things that we might be able to, to offer. Still, keeping in mind that we're going to follow all the recommendations as set forth by the CDC and keep our kids and families out of risk as much as, as we possibly can, and yet try to provide some kind of a fun summer program for kids.
Okay. Any further questions? Fairly none. We have a motion by Director Campbell, second by Director Neistrom. And we'll take roll call.
Charles Blacklands?
No.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Tom Hagland?
No.
Sue Kern?
No.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Bob Neistrom?
Yes.
You have a tie.
Okay, thank you. So we have a, a split vote, which is a, a no vote moving forward. So I don't know what the city Baxter council, how they'll handle this, but again, I think there was there's certainly some innovative ideas I think that can be brought forward. I, I think even if it's preparing the, the fields, I suspect that our kids and parents who use those fields would be totally fine if they weren't in in tip-top shape, but we'll wait to hear further back regarding this in the future.
Just want to make one note that your consent agenda included laying off the coordinator for the Baxter Parks and Rec program. So this will now fall on the remaining staff to figure out.
Okay, thank you, Cory. And I'd be very wrong, Cory, for you on a personal leave, but anyone that we've laid off, approved of right now, we can bring those back in time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Tom, if I could just share one, one thing. I, I sit on the Community Education Committee as a board member, and I see Cory up, up close and personal with, with her staff, the relationship that she has with her staff, the, the, the strong professional ties and the hard work. And Cory, I just want to take this opportunity, I'm not sure where else I'd be able to do it, but I sure appreciate all the hard work, all the constricting that, that your organization or your programs have had to do. There's a lot of tough, tough decisions, and I'm saddened by, by that, but, but I sure am encouraged by your hard work and your steadfastness in wanting to serve our area students, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you for, for that, Charles. I, I would echo that. I know Cory spent a challenging several weeks here, and and thank you for hanging in there and doing what you can with this upheaval of, of different change in, in our lives right now, so thank you. Okay, we'll move forward with the approval of our twenty-one, twenty-two VHS yearbook agreements. Lane, do you want to speak on that as well?
Marcy is coming up. She's ready to speak on it.
For Marcy?
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you.
So attached to the two-year agreement, we have done that in the past where we've done two years. The yearbook advisor likes to continue working with Jostens. The previous contract was forty dollars and seventy cents a copy for two hundred pages. This latest agreement is forty dollars and thirty-two cents a copy for two hundred and eighty pages. In the past, we also presented the Forest View Yearbook. However, with the change in January, that amount went from ten thousand to fifty thousand, so you guys will not be seeing the Forest View Agreement, but I'll just be one that I can sign and pursue with. But this one, being two years, does exceed that fifty thousand, FYI. Any questions?
So this is a two-year agreement, do you know it's a two thousand and one, twenty-one through twenty-two?
Yes.
So they look at it as fiscal year twenty-one, so twenty twenty-one, and then twenty-one, twenty-two, so fiscal year. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Marcy. Any?
I would move to approve that twenty twenty-one, twenty-two VHS yearbook agreement with Jostens for the proposed budget amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-five cents.
All right, second. Thank you. We have a motion by Director Kern, second by Director Blacklands for approval of the yearbook agreement as presented. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
Tom Hagland?
Yep.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Bob Neistrom?
Yes.
Charles Blacklands?
Yes.
All in favor?
Great, thank you. Before I forget, if I lose you on audio, because it did happen once earlier, I, just give me a little bit of time to get back, log back in. Okay, next up is approval of the amendments, the pupil transportation service agreement between Riker and school district. Lane, you want to?
Yes, I'd be happy to address it. As you know, approximately a year ago, the school district, in collaboration with Riker's Transportation Services, agreed to a two-year contract regarding our bus services. With school being moved to a distance learning model over the course of the last month or so, we have had to implement the agreement that we currently have in place, which is sixty percent reimbursement for special education and sixty percent for regular education reimbursement for each of those routes. With the distance learning initiative that has been brought forth to school districts by the Governor of Minnesota and also the Commissioner of Education through Ed Minnesota, one of the stipulations that they talked about is that they would like everyone to pay the full reimbursement for all special education routes. And that there would be reimbursement to school districts or to the, for transportation of these services. This is in, it does not meet the contract as we have it per se right now for people transportation. And so what we did is we developed an amendment to the pupil transportation services agreement that we have for this year that says that we would pay one hundred percent of the expenses associated with the special education routes for the remainder of the school year. And knowing that that is what we have been tasked with as part of their executive orders that have been put in place. My recommendation would be to accept this amendment so that we can pay the one hundred percent for these routes as per the agreement.
And Lane, just to confirm, that is for the special education routes, correct?
It's for the special education routes only, and at this point, the regular education routes are in sixty percent, which is what we agreed upon, you know, mutually agreed upon agreement a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move.
Tom, I approve the amendment, I move to approve the amendment to the pupil transportation services agreement between Riker Enterprises and IST one eighty-one as presented.
Second. Ruth, seconded. Did you hear her, Tom?
I did not, but I will make note. So we have a motion by virtue of Blacklands, second by Director Nelson for approval of the amended agreement as presented. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Tom Hagland?
Yes.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Bob Neistrom?
Yes.
Charles Blacklands?
Yes.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Next up is approval of resolution for a non-renewal of a non-tendered teacher that was in your board package. Is there a motion to accept?
I saw a motion to approve of the resolution for a non-renewal of the non-tendered teacher as presented.
Second. Motion by Director Campbell, second by Director Neistrom for approval as presented. Any questions, discussion? Here right now, roll call, please.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Bob Neistrom?
Yes.
Charles Blacklands?
Yes.
Reed Campbell? Tom Hagland?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Okay, last actionable item is item eight, which is to approve having the following three school board meetings, April twenty-seventh, May eleventh, May twenty-seventh, to be considered interactive telephone conference meetings. Lane, you want to talk? Any comments on this?
Yeah, I'll just bring it forth. What this is saying is we're just getting permission from the Board of Education to hold some of these meetings via interactive telephone congress, conference or other electronic meetings. And what is in the recommendation today is just to bring it through the end of the school year, and then it would go back into regular meetings unless the board decided to continue to, that we needed to have electronic meetings. We use these dates just because these are the meetings that remain while the school year is in session. But board can make changes at any point if they choose to go back to regular meetings or if they choose to extend the electronic meetings, but we just put these three on for now. But the board can make the decision as you move forward.
Could we do it where we just do one at a time rather than planning on being on telephone conference and just go with, if they're ready, one point seven, and then?
We can't at each time yet, and we can bring it up at each meeting if you wish to do that. We just put these on here so you didn't have to do that at each meeting, but we certainly can do that.
I think there's, yeah, there are rules. As far as I know of it, we're still planning to open our new board, correct? You know, what order to do that?
Uh huh, correct.
So it seems more appropriate to just do them one at a time?
We will, that's true, that we hope to begin school again and to open up our community more on May fourth, but I do want to reiterate that social distancing will still be in place. And so we would just have to have the extended tables and such that we've talked about and limit to ten people or less in our meeting.
Lane, do we have a formal approval to have a teleconference meeting like this?
Oh, I read that. It was recommended.
It was recommended, that's what it was. It was recommended by MSBA that you get permission at this meeting to do this. And then to, you can change it to the regular meeting whenever the Board of Education chooses to do that. We just, it took a short period of time to get this approval, so if we have to have more of these meetings via telecommunications like we are today, that, that we've gone through the action. Required, I'm not positive if it's, if it's required, but I know that, that in the MSBA literature that I looked at, they strongly recommended it.
Okay, just to take them one at a time. My concern would be is that if we, if we move forward with all May through the end of May, and then have the opportunity, some, maybe the last meeting in May or even the first one, that we can get back to more of a normal board meeting, I would be concerned about not getting that message out to those that maybe have kind of written off the board meetings and attending through May because of this action. So I'd be more inclined to just take them one at a time with May eleventh, my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve to have the regular school board meeting on April twenty-seventh to be an interactive telephone conference or electronic meetings.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Director. We have motion by Director Carr, seconded by Director Nelson for staying in our April 27th board meeting, being interactive via teleconference. Any further discussion? If not, roll call please.
Ruth Nelson, yes. Bob Nystrom.
Yeah.
Charles Blackland.
Yes.
Ree Campbell.
Yes.
Tom Haglund.
Yes.
Sukeran, yes.
All in favor?
Great, thank you. Next up, we'll have a bring our public schools foundation report.
I was not able to attend, I don't know if you were able to do that.
I was, I was able to attend it. It was a very nice meeting. I think the biggest issue that we spent the majority of the time with is we have this wonderful senior recognition banquet at the end of May to recognize all of our seniors and to give them the incredible scholarships for which they deserve, and so that they can use those scholarships in their future endeavors with their further education. And also at the Senior Recognition Banquet, we've made any change through the foundation the last couple, the last year, excuse me, where that is also the Hall of Fame Recognition Banquet. So we talked about what do we do with those. There's been a lot of discussion from that meeting and actually since that meeting about how to move forward, and I believe what the foundation is looking at is we're looking at recognizing the Hall of Fame members at the end of homecoming this year, kind of like we did before, only without the big banquet, but we would recognize them for all of our students at homecoming, at the pep fest, at homecoming halftime, we would recognize them and have them go down on the football field and recognize our 2020 Hall of Fame initiates at that time. There's still this conversation though about what to do with Senior Recognition Night. I've been having quite a lot of conversation with Andrea, and I think there's become a kind of a neat idea that we might do yet this spring to recognize our seniors. And so things have continued to be explored even since the meeting that we had that day. So I think there might be some kind of a virtual meeting and recognition of all of our, of our seniors yet in the month of May, at the very same time that we normally would have had recognition. So that's what we're working on there. So we talked about that in great detail. The other thing that we talked about is the foundation is really interested in how they can participate some in our building project and with some of our furniture fixtures and equipment, because they know that there's a lot of need that, that we don't, that we aren't going to be able to access. And so they have asked for a presentation to come to the foundation about some of the needs for our buildings as we move forward and what that looks like as far as distance learning, what it looks like as far as furniture in the buildings, equipment that is necessary and so on. And so we're, along with Lizzie, are going to put together a presentation and present to the foundation in September. So we'll be really excited to be able to have that opportunity as well. It's a rather short meeting, but those were really the items that we talked about that night.
Okay, great, thank you, Lane. Next up, this is your first report, Marcy.
So in your board packet is the enrollment report. From last month, we were down four, and from the beginning of the year, we're down 61 for comparison. Last year, we were down 16 from the previous month, and then from the beginning of the year, we were down 112. So that number does continue to go down a little bit, but it is not like it was last year, so that's good. Just an update to the board, we were looking at, there was no agreements in place for the trade homehouse, but, and I was going to look at having a potential auction contract presented to you at this meeting. Brad Watson did reach out, he does think that there, we could have a potential agreement presented at the next board meeting, so that was good news. And then just a quick update with all that was happening, we have been working on the 2021 budget. We've since been meeting again to try to update and revise based on our conditions, and we'll keep you posted as we work through that. Any questions?
Did the trade homes building initially get finished?
It did not. So we had a listing agreement of 65,000. Brian went and kind of came up with a number of what's left and deducted that amount from the agreement, so it will be less than what we had listed at originally.
Marcy, if you don't mind staying for a minute, I think that would be just a good time to talk a little bit about the budget and what we've been working on. Prior to COVID-19, we had been working since the month of January for sure, and we really felt like we had a solid footing on how we were going to balance our budget for this, looking forward to 2020, 2021's school year. And as you know, there have been a lot of changes that have potentially definitely affected the budget for the 1920 school year that we weren't expecting two months ago at all. And what that's going to end up looking like, we really don't know, to be perfectly honest. And so this past week, Marcy, myself, and we've spent hours and hours on it, and many other people have been contributing as well, and we're going to be continuing moving forward. But we've taken a much more conservative approach to the budget for next year, because we really don't know what it's going to look like, we don't know what the end balance is going to look like for this year. We also don't know what the levy impact is going to be to the School District next year. We don't know what the enrollment is going to be like for next year. And so what I'd like the board to know is that up until this point, we had put the spending for a hiring freeze, and we weren't doing any hiring at all. But like I said, Marcy and I have been fine-toothed coin that budget lately, and there are some positions that we know that we need to replace, and we think that it is in our best interest to move forward with those and to bring those hirings recommendations forward to you within the next couple of board meetings. But I would like the board to know that we have really modified our budget. We have modified our enrollment numbers that we're projecting, and literally, it's our best guess, but we are not going to be bringing forth near the amount of changes as we were hoping to be able to bring forward, because we think that we're being very, very frugal, and we're being very conservative in our approach to. I just don't want the board to be surprised though when we bring forth recommendations for hire. I want you to know that it will be nearly what we were anticipating, and we're going to watch and see what happens in the months of May, June, July, and even August. We'll probably be making decisions all the way along this year as we know more. Hopefully, it's, we're going to be similar to what we were planning, but we just don't think we would be good money managers if that's what we were planning at this time. So we're going to see that we're going to be way more conservative in the approach that we bring forward.
Lane brings up a good point, but Tommy did have that new application process, so I have reached out to them, asking them for a plan as far as, so we can monitor our cash flows. We do get our receipts in June and July, and if that's delayed to past July, we will have to continue to monitor that. And so I just, I just think this is the perfect time to let you know that we're watching it very carefully. Anything that we bring forward will be the must-do items, and, and we will keep you informed as we move forward, and it has been my fault. Are there any questions about it, really, that both Marcy and I have to ask? It's really an emergency, but it is for everyone, so we kind of started all over to be honest.
Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you, Marcy. Lane, do you want to, do you have more, most of your headups before?
Yeah, I'd be happy to highlight just a few more things. One of the things that, that people keep asking is, you know, really how is distance learning going, and what are some of the changes that are happening? Every day at 2:00, there's a team of us that watch the changes that occur with the Governor, and on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 4:30, there are updates from MDE that we like to have somebody on the line if we can. What we know as of today, the stay-at-home order has been extended through Sunday, the 3rd, I believe at 11:59, so May 4th, things are going back into place. But what we know right now about education is the same as what we knew before, that we hope to bring our children back to the onsite school on Tuesday, May 5th. And what would happen is Friday, the 1st of May, and Monday, the 4th of May, would be professional development days for teachers to come back to schools to change their method of teaching again, back to more of a seat-based education, and our kids would return on the 5th. We have been told a couple weeks ago by the Governor to anticipate the possibility that we may not be returning school to a seat-based education this year, and so we are planning both ways that that works. Many people ask me, in fact, I get asked pretty much everyone that I see or that I'm on a Skype, how is the distance learning going? And I must tell you that our teachers and all of the staff that we have in our school, our administrative teams, absolutely incredible what they have done to make distance learning really an effective process for our learners. I was on a call this morning at 7:00, and one of the people that was on the call said that her daughter, if she emails her teacher at 8:30 at night, her teacher still responds, and she said, "I cannot say enough for how people are engaging in distance learning, how they're communicating with families, and how beautiful it's being run and, and greater." And I'm so appreciative of our staff, and I look out here, Justin, you and your team through technology, this never could have been a reality without all of the work that you have made available and that the rest of our team has put together to make this happen. And so it is going very well for our public schools. Is it perfect? No, but our people have been giving efforts and souls to make this work, and so we thank everyone for that. Again, we're implementing all the safety, health measures that we've been asked to implement, social distancing, many people working from our old sites, covering our cocks and so on, washing our hands. We also have ordered a number of masks for people that choose to use masks, and they are available at our childcare and our lunch sites. Our daycare for our emergency workers and staff is just on, is averaging just under 100 children each day. It went down a little bit when we went to the, to the stay-at-home model where more people were working remotely, but originally, we had 260 or so families that had signed up children for the childcare. We are serving more than 2,000 meals per day. We have definitely found that the meals are things that people are appreciating greatly, so much that Alyssa Thompson and our food service department are wonderful, wonderful cooks and parents that are helping there, they're serving more than 2,000 meals a day. That's breakfast and lunch. The YMCA comes and also provides dinner at the same drop-off, so we're providing three healthy meals for our families each day, and we have now added so that we are providing weekend meals as well. So on Fridays, they're getting weekend meals as well. Yes.
Is there a way to donate to that program?
Marcy, is there a way to donate, just?
Food service?
Would it be more monetary, or? She's taking both, okay, go ahead. I do have to add too that our grocery stores here in town, and Costco, and they have been just wonderful about donating food to help us with this. It has really been a community partnership. Today, on this meeting that I was on with our legislators and so on, Carl Sampson was saying, and I'm just so proud of Alyssa and her team, and how when, when the lawn holiday came last weekend, and they provided food for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, so that our children were sure to have the meals that they needed over the long break. And so it's really been a beautiful partnership of people working together and keeping things going. So I just, I just thank everybody for, for all that they've done and the extra hours that everybody's putting in. A lot of fatigue to people right now, and it's just because everybody's giving their heart and soul to, to keep things going as much as we can. Just a couple other things aside from the COVID-19. We talked already about the budget, I was going to go through that extensively, but we were able to do that with Marcy. So you'll see some big changes at the meeting two, little less than two weeks from now. And then, let's see, everything else, I think everything else that I was going to talk about, we've either talked about, or we're going to discuss the graduation, and Andrea wants to be a part of that. So I thank the board for your commitment and for just supporting us through this really intense and difficult time.
See, Lane, if I could just add a quick testimonial on something you shared about our excellent teachers and the efforts that they've been putting forth, preparing distance learning for our children. Couple of weekends ago on a Saturday, one thing is about myself is I, my, my youngest child, my son, is extremely social, and he, he finds it important to invite his dad to Google Hangouts, even that, even though he's downstairs and I'm upstairs, and we'll, we'll chat back and forth over our computers once in a while. And on one of those Hangouts on a Saturday morning at about 10:30 in the morning, one of my son's teachers from Lowell Elementary jumped on that Hangout and chatted with us for about 10 minutes, more so with Jatton, but you know, that was just a neat, a really neat experience for him, a fun experience, he's able to show him his new puppy and all that type of thing, but this teacher was in the process of prepping for the next week and found 10 minutes to chat with my son, and I thought that was pretty special, and he still talks about it.
That's neat, yeah. Our teaching, yeah, everyone's just been incredible, our teachers have been phenomenal. You know, and then on top of this all, we have 12 buildings that we're trying to clean up the rooms and get everything locked up, and the people that are working in the buildings are working diligently to try to get the spaces ready so that as soon as our construction workers can come in and start working on these facilities, they can. And so I've had the fortunate opportunity to be able to stop by some of these buildings, and you can't believe the amount of work that everybody is, is working on to do that, on top of everything that we've been asked to do over the course of the last month. So if sometimes emails are a little bit slower, or you know, or whatever, please excuse us, but we're really just trying to tread water here a little bit, and we, we, we thank you so much for your support and your understanding and just for helping us through this. But thank you for sharing that, Charles, because every day I hear from somebody or I'll get an email about something wonderful that a teacher has done, or a parent professional has done, just making the life of, of one of our students or a family member just a little bit better during the summer time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lane, and thank you, Charles, for sharing that story. I know I've heard from others as well, this thing, positive influence, that a number of our staff members have been able to experience with, with our students and our community, so thanks for sharing. Lane, before I forget, did we have, were our athletic field lights on Monday evening?
They were not on on Monday evening. I thought they were going to be, but they weren't. So I heard from a few of you that, asking that very question, but I have double-checked with Ree and with Charlie, and I said they need to be on on Monday night. So Monday night, I'm not sure exactly what time it'll be, but they'll be on for about 20 minutes to show support for our senior class. And so there's still kinds of fun things going on right now to show support for our seniors during the month of May. The lights will be on, you'll also see, I think our community's going to be inundated with signs dedicated for our, our graduates that we're going to be putting up in, you know, our buildings and hopefully in some of your yards and so on as well. I know the senior, or the VHS is going to be having people come and painting all the windows on behalf of our kids. There's going to be some really neat technological things that focus and showcase our seniors. And so we're going to, we're going to have And so we're gonna, we're gonna finish really strong here this year. It's just gonna, it's gonna be a little bit different. Some of the way that we finish might even be something we carry over in the future. So, yeah, we'll make the best out of my tough situation. Yeah.
Lane, you do a good job of keeping the board abreast of these type of things. But if there's anything, um, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but, you know, signs or anything that, that, that I could do as part of the board to contribute to that process, even hanging anything in my yard to, to recognize our seniors, um, get you up on, on board.
Well, if any of you want to order those signs too, we could do that from our office on Monday.
That'd be great. That could be shared with us. That'd be great.
Sure. Yep. Be great.
All right. Great. Thank you. Uh, moving on, the next, uh, couple of meetings that we have next, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-first, we have a Project Overtime meeting at eight o'clock. And then our next school board meeting, Monday, April twenty-seventh. On the agenda, it's listed at six P M. And at one time, or at least my calendar, I have it at, uh, twelve o'clock. And, and just looking for confirmation, is this the one, Lane, that we work when you have at twelve and we're moving it back to six o'clock now?
Yeah, and I actually have a question mark here because we changed it to a special board meeting because of the all athletic banquet, um, that night. And since that has been, um, canceled for that evening, it's up to the board if you'd like to move it back to being a regular board meeting at six o'clock, or if you want to keep it the special one at, at twelve noon. Um, we do find that there's a lot of changes that come up at the last minute. So it is kind of nice to have the ability to amend if, if, if something comes up. But we're fine either way, uh, from the administrative level at the district. Um, it's kind of up to the board what you'd like. But right now it's set for twelve noon that day, a special board meeting, unless you want to go back to the regular meeting.
Any thoughts from anyone?
What's easier for the technology side?
During the meeting.
Don't make anything work. That's what we're here for.
Well, just worried at this time with all the changing happening, uh, maybe it would be important.
At six o'clock. I like what Tom, the point Tom had made, just trying to be as consistent as possible. So people are able to follow in line and keep track of, of the board. And if moving it back to six is, is allowable, I'd, I'd be, um, happy with that.
That is what's been published, you know, on the calendars and such.
Okay. Is everyone fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I think this is, uh, one of the first times we've had, uh, a discussion topic listed on our other business. And that is, uh, in regards to our twenty twenty graduation, um, for this spring. So Lane, um, I'll turn that over to you. I'm, I'm thinking that Andrea is probably online.
Just watching, so.
Up in Alabama.
So you can put right over here Andrea, and I think we'll let her lead it because she's, uh, she's been busy with this. So.
Uh, hello, everyone. And, um, yeah, uh, Jefferson Hagland, it's true. I, I, uh, I, I think this is a very unique, um, subject to talk about. But rest assured that it is a daily topic among our seniors, parents, and the principals around state and, and for the nation, but I'm more connected with, um, those that are in the state. So the messages that we have been sharing from Brainerd High School heavily centered around hope and pause. And those have been, um, I think well received by our parents and our seniors especially, that we are not making any, um, rash decisions, uh, about the future. And I don't mean to, to be flippant here and say that, um, commencement isn't a lot of work. But I can happily say, maybe because I'm old, that we can get it done, that we can get it planned and carried out in a few days. So I, I don't believe that we really need weeks and weeks and weeks of planning. But I do believe it's important that we continue to have hope. And, um, I share the sentiment. I think everyone is that we want, um, and hope that we will have an in-person ceremony. And that's what I've conveyed. However, I don't want to mislead people in students not being safe and following the, the guidelines and the directives of our, um, respected government officials, all of them, that have given us this guidance and the medical professionals. I really, I never profess to know more than they do. So I will say that we need to step pause and, um, have hope. Now, we, yeah, we with area principals and, uh, we met actually just this morning. Again, it's our third week that we meet. And, uh, that has been the top of our high school principals meeting is, um, celebrations and of course commencement. And just so you're aware, at least, um, in our direct area here, we have decided that we all are doing the same thing. We're taking that pause and we're going to wait and see what happens. And I think that just, um, it's, I, I know that for those that really want answers, um, this is a really uncertain time. And I just don't have answers and I need to be honest about that. So, um, I have reached out to some principals that I watch from afar and follow. And, um, my college roommate shared with me at communication to her as a parent, the senior in Minnetoka. And, um, Minnetoka is just, I really respect their principal, Jeff Erickson, and they too are taking a pause and, uh, waiting to see what happens. And so, um, at this point, we are just waiting a little bit longer to find out, uh, when we hope we can have, um, a traditional ceremony. And I know a few of you reached out and just shared that and told me that you'd like to have that. So I share that. So, um, as far as specifics, um, I, I am not prepared to share them because, um, our hope is that we will be able to have a ceremony. Just to let you know, Minnetoka decided to, their ceremony is scheduled for June because they released later, but they've already got, um, dates in July and August as backups. And they communicated that out. I did talk with Superintendent Larson just briefly about that, just sharing some things that I've learned. And so that is something too. I think that, um, most of us have been around family or friends that have had to make changes in some big like events like weddings, um, and, and birthday parties. And so I, I think we have to look at that, if there's something like that, we may have to postpone it. And, um, so that's where we're at. Prom, not that anyone maybe is asking about prom, but I'll just give you an update is that we also are having the same, um, in regards to proms. We are going to. Sorry, Justin, I think it's a bit long. Okay, no, it's okay. I just didn't know if I. Prom is also going to be postponed this weekend with our junior plus advisor, um, is Marcelle. And she's also exploring other dates that we might be able to use the N P A Event Center. And, uh, post that prom maybe this summer. And we really want to keep that option available too. As Superintendent Larson shared, uh, we've got some things that we're planning to do to kind of recognize and honor and celebrate our seniors. We're going to be decorating the windows of our school this week. Um, so I think by weekend you'll be seeing, hopefully, if we don't have a lot more snow, um, we're going to be outside, uh, decorated. And then also, uh, we are working on, um, a senior spotlight to be on our Facebook page and having seniors, um, submit video clips, um, answering some questions that we have for them, seniors. And so we'll be posting those and getting, uh, them to share in. And that will be nothing for them because they make videos all the time. So they can just, they probably intake twenty-two takes and decide which one is best, but we're going to be doing that as well.
So you'll share all of those that gets submitted?
Yes, uh, we, we're developing the process of submitting them and then having them be reviewed and then posted in, on our Facebook page. And so we're just working on the questions. Uh, we are working on them, uh, yesterday and today, and then getting the communication off to our students.
Last, last night when you and I talked on the phone, you talked also about the fact that you've been keeping many of the seniors in the communication and getting their foot as well. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, what you've been hearing from our kids?
Sure. Uh, I have been sending almost weekly communications to parents and or seniors and students just to give them an update and, um, keep telling them that we're supporting them and this is different. Uh, and so it's nice to have our students, um, connect with us. And so over the weeks, I have had, uh, lots of seniors, primarily senior parents, but also underclassmen, uh, writing and emailing me. And, um, I even got a text, um, last week and just, you know, giving ideas, asking questions, uh, getting reassurances. So our senior class cabinet, um, leaders and our student council leaders will be contacted to start that Facebook video process so they can lead us off with that. And then also they continue to be involved in the planning. Commencement is planned by the senior class cabinet.
Do you also want to talk a little bit about what you're thinking for senior recognition night or is that still kind of a secret?
No, I, I think it's, um, uh, Jessica Engel, executive director of Grand Public Schools Foundation, and I met yesterday. And we discussed, um, you know, having a program that can be taped and done prior. And then we don't have it even on the night that the recognition was scheduled to occur. And we, um, solicited the help of Bert Jensen, our Facebook advisor, who has all the senior pictures, uh, ready to go for our yearbook. And he's been helping work with Jenny Barnhart, one of our terrible administrative assistants, to create a PowerPoint presentation. And Jessica and I will host the program. Um, and that way people can log in and, and follow along and see their senior be, um, awarded a scholarship. Yes.
So we'll do the speeches just like we did before?
We will.
All be taped and everybody can be watching it at the same time?
Right.
And their picture will come up when they give the, the award with the name of the award and maybe the person or the people that is in honor of.
We thought that this provides us an opportunity to share a larger audience because me, um, probably years that I've been in Brainerd, we have, uh, had a big recognition program. However, we haven't opened it up to the public. And this would actually provide an opportunity for us to maybe have a wider audience. Um, grandpa, grandma can come and, uh, the donors and the people that support those organizations, they raise money. All these volunteers that raise money can tune in and, and watch. So we're excited about that. I, they even joked, um, this is concert banquet, uh, celebration time. And so it's been strange, you know, not having those. And so Jessica and I are even going to dress up. We might have to wear hats. We can't do haircuts before then. But, um, we, we would say that we would dress up and have it be a formal, uh, virtual street. Yeah. So do you have any questions that are any input that you'd like to share for the board?
Okay.
Thanks. And I just.
Andrea.
Yeah.
Andrea, thank you. First of all, Charles, if you mute your, um, mute your, it might help what you're seeing. But, um, Andrea, thank you for, you know, sharing what you did here and for, um, continuing with open pause. Um, as a, as a father of a senior graduating this year, I'm, I'm going to hold out that open pause as well that we have some kind of a, uh, really cool commencement ceremony that will likely be, uh, like none others in the past or even in the future because of, of what we're doing. And I think, uh, Charles made a comment earlier, this is the time as leaders that be innovative and creative and really shining, uh, when, when we're really, uh, asked to. And so I appreciate your efforts and, and your team to, uh, continue with open pause. And let's, let's find several great ways that we can, um, recognize our seniors this, this year. So thank you for that. And thanks also for saying, hey, you know what? If we need to put something together in three, four days, we can do it. That's the spirit and that's, that's what we have. That's what we need to, uh, step up to be able to do. So appreciate that as well.
Well, thank you for the support. And I have a sister, my niece is graduating this year from my hometown. And, uh, this has been, you know, talk, you know, on my sister and, and, uh, my niece. And, and I, I keep reminding her, um, that they are, they are going to be a part of history. I mean, we all are in some way, but this class of twenty twenty is really going to be historic because of, um, you know, the challenges that we're going through together.
Another thing, Megan, that's kind of fun for our seniors is, um, they're asking everyone, we looked up the board involved too, to send a picture of your graduation and what year it was and where you graduated from. And Carla Sand is putting together a, a, a video or something where they can see, I showed my Farrah Fawcett hair the other day.
As did I, Superintendent Larson. Yes.
Yeah.
My color sweater.
Yeah. We did it.
Would, would ours be a wider length?
That's funny too. So, but we've been kind of having fun with that. And I know that Carla is planning to do a real big, uh, dedication to all the seniors too.
Right. And I, I did want to share with you, I appreciate your support. And, uh, for all of you, um, we've had a lot of really good ideas we share, um, via social media. And people have shared other ideas with me directly. Uh, please know that we though at Brainerd High School are really committed to providing, uh, equity. And any type of celebration, we want to make sure that it's very inclusive to all of our, or all of our seniors, not just learners, but our seniors. And so, you know, and some things that are a great idea when you look deeper, um, we just have to be careful that we make sure that we're inclusive and, uh, there's equity in that. So, thank you for your support.
See Andrea or possibly Lane, quick question. And, uh, where will the information be shared in terms of senior recognition, but also with the turning on the lights of the high school? Will that be the, the Brainerd High School Facebook page or will it be a blast of some sort? So, so we may be able to, to find out what's going on, um, social media wise, or is there a place on the website?
I believe that too. Director Campbell is also on this meeting. And I can speak for him and he can correct me if I'm wrong. But we will, uh, post the information always through our social media Facebook page for Brainerd High School. But we also are thankful that Carla Sand Communications for the district helped push out things on our, also our district's social media. And that is on Twitter and our Brainerd Public Schools Facebook page. We though, also if you're a parent of a high school student, we share that out. And then when appropriate, we'll send a district-wide communication to your parents.
Great. Thank you very much.
Charlie, are you there? Um, do you know what?
I, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Charlie, can, do you know what time they're going to have the lights on on Monday evenings? Is there a scheduled time?
Well, oh, no, that, it's a little problematic. My colleagues are, are talking about, uh, some issues that have come with that, like hundreds of people violating which we have homework. Uh, are really kind of violating the, the social distancing practices. Uh, our thinking was to do that at an undisclosed time and with the help of some of our technology people in the district, Mr. Jensen, Mr. Wire, um, using some drone video footage and some cell phones and drone video, uh, to actually put some, something together, uh, that recognizes and honors, uh, incentive sign at home during this time. And, um, that's really our plan so that we don't actually promote people to show up at that site. And, uh, once that's created and done, we would certainly push that out and make sure that that gets in the hands of our entire community. And, uh, so that, that's kind of our tentative plan. And I, I would welcome any comment or feedback.
Charlie, I think that's fantastic. Well thought out. I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, I agree. Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Andrea. Any other questions regarding commencement at this stage from board members?
Andrea, would you be willing just the next couple of board meetings, just to come maybe and give an update or be on, you know, on social media and just give a little update on what's happening, uh, for our seniors and for the end of the school year?
Absolutely. And I would encourage, um, everyone who's, uh, watching, listening is to, oh, our Brainerd High School Facebook page. We're going to wrap it up and try to have it be even more live than we typically do by, you know, recording or posting events so that we can follow. And, uh, we can highlight and celebrate our seniors.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, any other business to come before the board at this time? Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank everyone of the board members for, um, working through our, our meetings this, this method, this way. I, I think it went well, at least from what I can tell on this end. So thank you everyone for, for participating. I thought it went well. Um, if there are no other. If there are no other issues to come before the board, we'll accept the motion to adjourn? Tom, if I could just say, also, with us being at a distance, I don't get the safest type of thing face to face, but Lane, I sure appreciate your leadership and sure feel confident on how things are going, and sure glad that you're at the helm of our educational ship here. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thanks, but again, it takes the whole team. It's everybody working together, but I sure appreciate it. We feel very supported by the board as well and our community, and together we're going to get through this, and we're going to, we're going to end strong, and so, thank you.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
I move to adjourn.
For a second?
Second.
I think that was by you, Sue, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, it's not listed as roll call, so I'm just going to do all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good week, everyone.
Take safe.